Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation Plan. I'm Paul Krikorian, joined by my colleagues, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Blumenthal, and we're ready to begin today's special meeting. I think since we have multiple speakers who wish to speak about multiple matters... Can we turn that electronic device off? It's disrupting the meeting. So, everybody, please make sure your electronic devices do not disrupt this meeting, so I don't have to exclude somebody from the meeting for having an electronic device. Mr. Herman, be quiet. You'll sit silently, except when you're invited to come to the mic and speak. Otherwise, you will be silent and not disrupt this meeting. All right, so we'll go ahead and take our multiple-item speakers. We'll give them two minutes each. We'll start with Ms. Ramirez.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, I was just at the La Placita. La Placita is ugly, filthy, nasty, and dirty. And you know what was nice? I got to see a free Navy show of singers, Navy veterans, singing and playing their instruments. They took pride. They were animated. They loved what they did. And what I have seen in America, in all work environment, you get people who are drowsy, who are sloppy, who don't perform their jobs and their job descriptions adequately. What we need in America is to hire... Now, what we need to hire is military veterans, whether they are active or inactive, uniformed or ununiformed. And I know that Councilman Krikorian has heard me say this ad nauseam, but you know what? The service in America has gotten worse. We're hiring Third World ghetto, and we're hiring wetbacks and gangbangers. And you know what? They have no customer service. You yourselves know that. Let's bring the standards up in America. Let's get professional military veterans who can answer a phone and say, "Hello? May I help you? Thank you." Be cordial. Be professional. Be classy. Be elegant. Show you love, who you are and what you are. Again, your job is a representation of your arm and your body. If you love what you are and who you are, you will take pride in what you do, even if you don't get paid for it. But you take pride. And loving what you do, or showing the world that you love what you do, is vitally important. America's the greatest country to live in. And therefore, let's show cordiality, professionalism, love, respect, because when you help the other person, bingo, it comes back to love you. You help, it comes back to help you. Always, the law of cause and effect. The law of cause and effect. You give service, you provide it with love, kindness, courtesy, professionalism, and all that, it will come back multitude. So again, God bless America. God bless Donald Trump, and God bless the United States military. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks, followed by Corey Schmidt. Okay, it looked like Mr. Sacks just stepped out. So is Corey Schmidt here? Is there someone named Julia who would like to speak? Okay, Mr. Sacks, come on up.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record, Arnold Sacks. I did, I signed up for all three items. I'm especially concerned about the economic development zones. You know, you had that economic development zone once before. At the convention center, it was an economic development zone after the city turned management over to AEG. So AEG got to get the benefits of the economic development zone, which was set up by the state, which allowed them to pay their employees the first $25,000 of their salary. Instead of the city getting that money, it went to a private contractor, a private industry. Doesn't make sense. And then you find all these areas, you know what's really fascinating? You go around different parts of the city, you find all these topless dance places and nude bars and stuff. They're all in economic zones. So the dancers essentially are getting paid by the state, $25,000, which actually goes to the owners, and the dancers get jack. And Jill, the Economic Development Strategy Plan for five years and a Comprehensive Job Creation Plan. I think you have the order mixed up. It should be three, then two. I remember when Jan Perry had an ordinance in front of city council, no fast food in certain areas of the city, but not citywide. How does that create jobs? It doesn't create jobs. It takes jobs away. But you know what's creating jobs? Marijuana's creating jobs. They're selling marijuana all over the place. Nobody knows what's happening to the money that should be coming to the city, but it's creating jobs. My suggestion, create some crack houses. Crack houses would bring in some real economic benefits to the areas that have no fast food, which is a detriment to the marijuana industry, because when you smoke pot, you get the munchies, and you gotta go someplace to get munchies, no fast food. I think you ought to look into repealing that ordinance that Jan Perry put together and put some fast food restaurants in south-central LA. It's the only place where people can get starting jobs and get $13, $13, $14 an hour. Thank you. That's two minutes.
All right. No, there's...
Do we have a minute for public comment?
No, no, it's a special meeting.
Oh.
Is...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Corey Schmidt here? All right, is Julia here? All right, let's go ahead and bring up Mr. Spindler, please, next.
So, and again, congratulations to Katsim and Harris, death and dildo. He's found a way to create jobs by reselling Rams tickets. He came up with a brilliant idea.
So you need to...
But I know, I know, I'm talking about the Jedi niggas and how they make economic development. And the way you do it is you take shit and you reinvent shit to create jobs and economic development. Like, for example, the reselling of football tickets is an example. Now, people do that with commissions, but what Katsim and Harris's program, his pilot project calls for is that you go ahead and you directly contact Coliseum Commission officials for the ticket.
That's not related to anything on the agenda, Mr. Spindler. You're going to the agenda and disrupting the meeting.
Yeah. It's not, nigga. Chief Executive Analyst report to the update of citywide Jew-nigga comprehensive plans with public fucking works. That's why they take a street and tear it down and rebuild it. That's a job and another job. All this shit is a job motherfucking tense. And you look at some people like, for example, Katsim and blah-blobing-bled. Now, he gave a certain nigga a job about 15 years ago. She didn't have a job. Now she got a job. And then, of course, workforce development department, why they motherfuckers never called me back on my job, because my job was the most important job in the citywide economic strategy. Now, before my job, Mad Zibo used to have my job, and that was sucking my gossies fucking cock. Thank you so much.
Return to your seat and remain quiet through the rest of this meeting. Is there Michael Schulstone?
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon. I'm Michael Schulstone with Central City Association. We're generally supportive of the SEDs and the jobs plan, and glad to see them both moving forward today. However, as the SEDs point out, the city's economic development system is decentralized, and responsibilities are scattered throughout departments with little coordination among them. We appreciate the recommendation to form a task force made up of city departments, and believe this is a good first step. But this will not provide a long-lasting structural solution, nor a true public-private interface. This is most evident with respect to management of the city's real estate portfolio, which is perhaps the most important and powerful... The city's most important and powerful economic development tool. A recent report by the city controller to form a Los Angeles Municipal Development Corporation would rightly address this issue and build off the reports before you today. The item was recently heard by the Information Technology and General Services Committee, and we believe it should be considered by this committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Corey, Julia, Gary Fordes, last call. Okay, Ty Jackson. All right, then that would bring up Mr. Herman.
Yeah, call the public comment card. It's called the Brown Act. Resales of incentive nigs. I know what Jedi's look like. I know who the Jedi is. I look at the acronym of Jedi, and I think about the mayor of Los Angeles. But you see, on item two, he talks about the analyst test. That analyst test is all about the so-called objective and subjective standard test, in which you put that threat management unit right up my ass for the second time.
That's not on the agenda, sir.
Why, he's dealing with public works.
Speak to the agenda, or you'll be removed.
He's dealing with public works. All I'm trying to do is get a contract with the administration to help pay for the damage and harm you caused in the fiscal year. Oh, you got the year wrong. That year, starting as of the year now, 2019, were Jennifer H. Cops. So then on item three, my niggas, AEG, another acronym, as I signed up, always under C-E-D-S, cunt educate dick strategy for you folks. You see, I always come up with acronyms, because like a cunt, I'm able to relate to development. I too, in looking for a job to improve the matter of amending my right under the T-M-U-T-R-O to delegate the report. That report strictly says under item, for the record, U.S. Number 0950529.
That's not on the agenda, sir. Speak to the agenda. Speak to the agenda. This is your final warning, or you'll be removed.
You ain't gonna tell me about the Brown Act, nigga. I'm telling you, you're fat fucking cunt like suck my cock if you could.
Mr. Herman, continuing to disrupt the meeting. Please have him removed. He's expelled from this meeting.
You're not expelled. This is not a school.
Out.
This is not a school.
Please have Mr. Herman removed. He's continuing to delay the progress of this meeting.
You're like this. Discrimatory motherfucker.
Don't forget your little dog.
You fucking homies are terrorists.
Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt this meeting and delay the progress of this meeting.
You're talking about your human affairs.
Yes, Mr. Harris Dawson.
I'll ask the city attorney to make a note. We have a new policy that if you get thrown out of a meeting, that you don't go to the to other committees or to council within a certain number of hours. So I want to make sure that gets implemented for Mr. Herman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Blumenthal, did you have... Okay. All right. Very good. So since there were many fake names apparently put into the list, was there anyone else who is actually a real human being who would like to speak? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and hear item number one, please.
Item number one, Mr. Chair, Economic and Workforce Development Department Report Relative to Establishment of a Jobs and Economic Development Incentive Zone Policy and Program.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Chairman Krikorian, committee members, John Reamer, the interim general manager, Economic Workforce Development Department. I'm joined by Sam Hughes and Daisy Hernandez, and I want to begin by saying thank you. This is exciting. The notion of jobs and economic development, it's powerful. It definitely has passion attached to it, and in spite of all of the comments that have recently been heard, I believe it's going to be transformative. We see this as a tool. We're responding to the directive from this body to bring back before you possibilities with respect to what can be done as it relates to driving economic development, but not doing it alone, but doing it in conjunction with, in partnership with, job opportunities. And the Jedi does indeed do that. And we do use the acronyms. It does help. But for those who may not know, I'll say it one more time. Jedi represents jobs, economic development, incentive zone. And the... What we have before you and what we've presented is a series of options for us to use. Later, we're going to talk about our SEDs, our Citywide Economic Development Strategy, which I like to refer to as our map. Jedi, I'm referring to as one of our tools. A tool that is used to transform, a tool that is used to provide us one another option, a tool that is used to provide opportunities, and then lastly, a tool that is used to enable us to leverage what we all bring to the environment. We bring the incentive and the, through policy, the opportunity to make it possible for businesses to come to Los Angeles, and not just come here, but to thrive. And thrive and be a benefit, not just for themselves, but for those in the surrounding areas. It's an opportunity, a job opportunity, for men and women. And I would like to add to that, not just job, but career path opportunities. Options, one of many. There are many economic tools that we have, but I'm especially excited about Jedi. And then the T is the transform. Taking areas of our city that may have been challenged, or that are facing challenges. There may be areas of underrepresentation with respect to economic development. Jedi specifically wants to speak to that. So I thank you, I thank the mayor's office, and all the departments that have worked with us, certainly the CLA and the CAO, to bring before you what I think is a transformative tool that will carry us a long way into making an impact as it relates to economic development. So we're here to answer any questions that you might have. We submitted in our transmittal recommendations, along with many incentives that currently exist inside of the city, business incentives from the various city department family members, along with that also what other cities are doing as it relates to economic development, and then the policy itself. This policy speaks to how Jedi can be carried out, one that provides inside of it the framework and guidelines as to where and how a Jedi zone would be identified, the opportunities for the council and the mayor's office to empower the Economic Workforce Development Department in partnership with identifying these areas, along with when we don't have a readily identified area, are taking a look and seeing, using similar criteria that we have placed inside of the policy, what could be used to establish a Jedi zone. We will be reporting to you biannually, year two and four, and then in the fifth year, to speak to how well things are going. So it's, again, I'm pretty excited. We are pretty excited about this, so I'll stop talking and let you ask us some questions.
Well, I'm glad you're excited, and thank you, because the department has done, you know, really tremendous work in... Throughout this process, but especially of late, in bringing all of the work that this ad hoc has done, and bringing it into a productive work product, I think that, I agree with you, is hopefully going to be transformative of the way we think about jobs creation and economic development. And I especially appreciate in the report that it... The report started with a summary of all that we're already doing. Because it continues to astonish me and disappoint me that so many potential business people, potential businesses that might potentially move into Los Angeles, and even entrepreneurs who are already here, are unaware of all that's available to them to encourage them to build a new business here, to grow a business that exists here. There's a lot, and hopefully, as we move forward with these recommendations, there will be a lot more. I think... Let me just start with kind of a broad question. A lot of these things, a lot of these recommendations for incentives within the Jedi zones are probably things that... Some of them are things that we ought to be doing, you know, regardless of whether we create Jedi zones. And I wonder if there's some optimal number of areas or size of Jedi areas that you think would be appropriate, so that there, in fact, is incentivization to locate in particular areas, but at the same time, you know, it's not so focused that maybe it discourages as much participation as we might have. So that's one part of the coin. And then the other... The other side of the same coin is, there are really two main objectives, in my view, of having incentive zones of any kind. One is as a vehicle to bring new business into the city of Los Angeles, to provide the kinds of incentives that will create new jobs and bring new businesses in. And the other is to focus that, hopefully, new activity in areas that will most be benefited by the creation of new businesses that might already have built-in disincentives to opening new businesses and that need the extra help. I just... In fulfilling those two missions, though, I just want to recognize that they are different, and that you can fulfill the second part of that mission by simply moving businesses around within the city of Los Angeles, which really does not create any new jobs and does not create any new revenues. It just makes them different jobs and different things. So have you given thought to those sorts of issues, and are... Is that thinking reflected in the recommendations that you have before us?
I believe it is, and I appreciate the carefully crafted question, in the sense that economic development is broad. It's huge. It's the second-largest city in the nation, and I can't help but combine the two conversations, so I apologize. And if I get out of bounds, I'm sure the city attorney will pull me back. The notion of a citywide economic development strategy, it speaks to a number of tools, but the one thing that is very clear, and it was alluded to earlier this afternoon by one of the speakers, is a comprehensive approach, not a fragmented approach. Our coming together. We're one city, and we've divided...
I'm sorry, I hate to distribute, but there's conversation outside that's actually disrupting this meeting?
For the record, it's Mr. Spindler.
It did sound to be so, yeah. Sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Go right ahead.
We're one city, and we've portioned ourselves up amongst 15 areas represented by council members. The notion of having some areas appear to be stronger than others, it never bodes well for one body. And what our economic development strategy speaks to is identifying areas where clearly we have underdevelopment, we have underrepresentation. And Jedi is a tool that speaks to that. Jedi says that we want to take those areas that can be stronger as the city is getting stronger, and focus on the real need. We utilize existing tools, opportunity zone being one of them, promise zone another, federal level, opportunities that... For economic development, ours is to parlay it with that thought of sparking, if you will, encouraging economic development. Just on that alone, one of the criteria that we have for establishing a Jedi is where there is an existing opportunity zone. In theory, at a minimum, we would have 26 Jedi zones, just looking at the distribution of opportunity zones throughout our various council districts inside of the city. And that's at a minimum, and there could be many, many more. But the focus here is to say how we can, in those areas that are in need, and they're scattered throughout our city, help businesses realize that opportunity is there. And I would agree with you, not just moving food around the plate, but inside of the city, coming into an area, and as you alluded to, this is something that we already do. Yes, we do, but we, as a city family, are saying, we're committed to pushing this and expediting this, because we see there are areas, and I'll use a personal analogy. I have three children. I won't go into the ages, because I recognize that I'm on public forum, but one of them is still in high school, two of them are grown. So I'm obviously going to give more attention in certain areas to the one that's still in high school. And not to say that we have areas in our city that are in high school and others that are grown, but I think you get my point. Where there is a need, what we, as a city family, are saying is that we want to give attention to that. And businesses, what we are willing to do, and that's the notion of the acronym tool, transform, option, opportunities, and leverage, we want to take our resources, as you take yours, and marry them as one, so that we can both benefit. The business will benefit, as well as the city will benefit. And it won't just be that area that's underrepresented, the entire city will benefit. And that's what the SED speaks to, that as the weaker areas of our city grow stronger, the entire city grows stronger. So Jedi is committed to that. It really is. And the notion of not just economic development, but job opportunities, career path opportunities that are sparked out of that, we're believing that the momentum will build. And I would agree with you. Those businesses who may be a little shy of not knowing whether or not it's real, Jedi will show that it is real. They will see the efforts that come forth. We don't have the ability to do this everywhere, but this is a concentrated effort to say where we recognize there is need, and that's why we put the criteria before you in our policy, we are committed to ensuring success for those who want to come here and thrive as an employer, partnering with employees to impact this environment.
Okay, very good. With regard to some of the specific recommendations, I just have a few questions and then turn it over to my colleagues. With regard to the expedited process for development permits, the recommendation of providing private consultants, I get the need for that, and I get why the recommendation is in here. It feels uncomfortable to me that we, as a city, are... Would be hiring outside consultants to wade through our bureaucracy, our own bureaucracy. Something feels odd about paying someone who's an expert in getting through the city's processes. And I wonder, and I know we do have people who fill similar roles in some of our development departments, so had you considered, or would it not be worth considering, having a team of, for lack of a better phrase, expeditors within EWDD, who would serve that role, to be the actual concierge, if you will, for small businesses to be able to find their way through, rather than hiring somebody off of a bench?
No, most certainly. And let me own this one. This is... Are saying, let's ask now for the option, not necessarily the mandate for a need, so that as this moves the way we're believing and hoping it will move, if we have moments of peak, then we have a vehicle there to assist. In the beginning, we're not sure how this is going to take off, so do we want to move forward and take a person and obligate them? That's probably not the best word, but assign them to something that we're not sure where it's going to go. So this ask here is simply providing us the option and the opportunity to have a bench in place, not saying we're going to use it. I totally agree with you. Through this committee, we've been able to establish our business assistance team, Business Resource Unit. Already, we are working with businesses to facilitate, navigate, assist challenges they might have, not just getting started, but moving through the city system. So yes, it's something that we have certainly given thought to. This does not in any way, nor should it be taken as believing that city family can't do this. City family can do this. But right now, I can't honestly bring before you...
Sure.
...what the need would be.
Okay.
So instead of me having to come back to you and saying, "Council member, I need to come back before the committee," because what this ask is, we have the option there... come back before the committee because what this ask is, we have the option there and we can turn it on if we need it. We, we already are planning on using an EWDD person from our BRU, our business resource unit. We're thinking that they could possibly handle roughly five zones and, and we're thinking that a zone effectively and efficiently with roughly about 20 businesses inside of it, we could handle that. We're thinking that, we're, we're being very optimistic, but we're thinking we could, we could handle that. So again, this, this was not to suggest we won't do it. I think that is the best place for it to be, for our team that are already established in relationship. I mean, we, we have a, a, a foundation in place. We have our business source center that we're partnering with and we have our BRU that they're out working now. So this, it can, but I can't, I can't tell you what it would be. So this is an ask to have something available if we need it, but if we don't need it, then no harm, no foul.
Great. With regard to the recommendation about fee reductions for by right development, would it be appropriate, has it, have, has it been the case in other cities that fee waiver, fee reductions or fee waivers like that would be available to all types of by right development that are appropriate to the zone? Or would there be, are there some types of development that might be more preferred and, and eligible for fee reduction? Or would that, could that be something that each zone could determine, you know, for itself?
Right. I, so, so let me, let me respond by saying, I won't call it a fee reduction even though I get, I get that. And it's presented that way. It's, ultimately that's what it does come out to though, so I get that. Yeah, it's, it's our attempt to not receive or, or say to a, a, a business, they do not have to pay what they would normally have to pay. But it's our attempt to put a, an allowance in place for those departments that are going to provide these services and they can't reduce any fees at all. So it's, it's more of an internal mechanism for, for our, our, our city departments. As it relates to by right, Sam, I, I defer to you to speak to that particular issue.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. The projects that are by right, certainly they would be entitled, but that's not to the exclusion of those projects that require entitlements. The hope is that by targeting by right projects will help accelerate deployment of our assistance into underserved areas due to project readiness. So it's, it's certainly not to the exclusion of others, but-
I, I don't mean to broaden it to include, because that, that's another entirely, that's a complicated issue because of full cost recovery for those departments. But I guess what I mean is, among by right developments, there might be some that would be more preferable for a particular neighborhood to want to encourage than others. There might be some retail developments that might be by right, but that's a neighborhood that really wants to encourage more housing or vice versa. There, you see what I mean? So I'm wondering if, if, if we were to accept this recommendation, would it be something that could be applied less than universally depending upon what the community wanted to incentivize?
Yeah, I can appreciate that. The, the intent of the Jedi Zone policy in many ways is to help stimulate commercial activity. And with that in mind, and going back to your example, a, a venture by right or otherwise that is going to stimulate economic development in a traditional way, if you will, namely commercial, industrial, retail, that would have priority, if you will, over another project that might too, might be by right, but let's say it's housing. So there will be some deference in that regard, given the spirit of the Jedi Zone policy.
Okay. And then my final question, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, is on the subsidized wages during training period, training period, the employers connection recommendation. I think that's a terrific idea. Is, would it be appropriate to limit that to new hires? Or have you seen it done both ways where it, it applies to retraining of existing employees as well as new hires? You know, I could see, in, in order to incentivize more hiring, I, I think this recommendation is a very strong way to encourage employers not to be, not to have to be concerned about the training time of bringing a new employee on. So there's a direct new job benefit for our investment in this. It's, it may also be good policy, but it's a different kind of policy when you're talking about retraining of existing employees. Doesn't add new employees, it might prevent an employee from, you know, becoming no longer employable or something, but it's a different kind of policy objective. So what, what was the thinking on this? Was, was it the idea to apply to, to new hires or more broadly?
It's fairly broadly, actually. Unfortunately, Robert Stein, our workforce development assistant general manager, isn't here to speak in more detail regarding this, but there are, through the Department of Labor and IOA, there are funds for retraining, if you will, as recent as a couple of days ago. Just anecdotally, the general manager and I, along with Mr. Stein, were at an event whereby they're looking to develop and train people that are new to technology. Many people are living in an analog world, many people are working at an analog pace, but things have changed and tech is before us. And so there are resources to retrain folks to get into high tech. And so it's not to the exclusion of that in terms of retraining people, but certainly the intent is training those folks that are otherwise unemployed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Members? Mr. Bloomfield?
Yeah, just, um, thank you very much, Bob. I'm excited that all the work that's been, you know, echo what the chair has said. So this is a really, this is a banner day moving forward. Just building on the retraining thing and the employees, I mean, if, what we want to avoid, of course, is if somebody moves an employee from down the street to the Jedi Zone to get the 25,000, how do we avoid that kind of situation? Where we're, where people are gaming the system a little bit to take advantage of this, but not, not creating a net improvement for the area?
Remember that?
Not a problem. And, and I should say, this kind of, this, that's the specific adding on that, but it builds on the initial point that the chair was making and, and I know where you were going with that because we, we both lived through, when we were in the state, the, the elimination of the enterprise zones. And, and Governor Brown was very insistent about it and there were a lot of folks who were making the claim that we were just moving the, moving the chairs around and not actually producing net, net gains. I think that this, this here, we, we are, we are, we do have the ability to create the net gains and to create the focus where we want to focus. But that still is a lingering question and I think we both share that concern, having lived through a very difficult debate on that in the state. And I, you know, and I don't want to see those things happen again where we get criticized just like the state got criticized for the enterprise zones. So we have to not only build it the right way, but have the right metrics to show that, that we are creating a net, net gain.
Your, your point is, is well taken and, and we will definitely make sure that, that that is not just considered, but taken advantage of, from the standpoint of making sure that that does not happen. Someone moving someone from another location to, to that location, we, we can and will put guidelines in place to, to make sure that the, the work opportunity is associated with that area in the Jedi.
Okay. I mean, I guess the devil's in the details of how that, how that comes out, because I, I just, I still see that as a, as a potential problem, but I, there must be ways to, to work around it and put the protections in it, in there for it. I was, I wanted to get a sense, I think I got a sense from you, that on how many Jedi Zones you think would be created? And you were saying about five?
No, no, what, what I was going to is that right now, we, we have, we believe that a staff member could potentially cover five zones, given roughly 20 businesses in the zone. But the criteria that we've identified in the, the policy that outlined where is Jedi Zone could, could be identified-
It's a lot bigger.
It could be identified where a promise zone exists, it could be identified where an opportunity zone exists. And just looking at opportunity zones alone, every council district except for two has at least two of them. So that alone would, would give us at least 26 Jedi Zone. Not even taking into account the other factors that we're allowed to use based on what we put in the policy to establish a Jedi Zone absent apart a opportunity or a promise zone. So that-
But, but for the million and a half bucks, and I assume maybe that's just the, the first step, you can't really do much in terms of all of those zones. Maybe you could do something in a couple of zones, but, I mean, I think about, you know, the facade program we put together for, with CRA money in my district, that was a million and a half bucks for one facade program and that covered, you know, or will cover a handful of facade loans. So I'm not sure how the money, unless this is sort of proof of concept, I mean, in order to really do this, it's going to cost a heck of a lot more money.
Agreed. Certainly agreed.
Yeah.
No, no, I can't wait to be able to come back to you and say that we don't have nearly enough. I, I, I wait, I long for that day. But to get started, not knowing where this is going to go, what we're asking the city family to do is dedicate the million dollars, 1.5, for this effort. And trust me, we, we've had the discussions ourselves with respect to where will this go, how can this be used? And if this takes, and let me stop using the, the negative word, when this takes hold, we certainly will be back to you. The question is, that we were having today is, you know, what's an acceptable return on investment? Because that's what this is.
Yeah.
We as a city family are saying that we want to invest 1.5 million into this process that we believe will benefit in the long run in a number of areas, some of which we will never be able to measure. A person being able to get a job that leads to a career and the impact on that family. Just a number of things that we can never put a dollar amount to. But to get started, it's, it's a modest, very modest amount that we, we've asked for and we recognize it, it, it won't cover what this can be. And so look for us to be back.
Okay. And then when we do come back in terms of funding, there may be this tension or, or opportunity, you know, right now it's general fund money. And in an odd way, you know, usually around here, we're always trying to figure out ways to convert special funds into general funds, because that's our more flexibility. When you actually step back from this, we're kind of converting general funds to special funds because we're taking general fund money and we're lowering the fee that, that, that folks have to pay for different things, which is appropriate because that's an appropriate But it's limited in its scalability. If there's a way to figure out how to flip that script a little bit and, and instead of taking the general fund to subsidize the special fund, we figure out a way to just lower the fees and make it up through the special fund in some ways. Obviously, we, there, there are laws we have to deal with and special, and special funds have to go to what, you know, what their purpose is, but there may be a way to, to wring out a little bit more value on the special fund side of the equation so that we don't run into this, it doesn't really matter on the, on this small investment, but as the investment gets bigger and it looks, it's going to look more like this conversion of general funds to special funds, that we figure out a way to get the general, get the special funds to pay for some of this.
I, I certainly don't want to, Councilmember, be Pollyannaish, but I see a multitude of options available to us as the, the, the two items that we will discuss today, one the tool, the other the map converge together. And we're bringing the city family together as, again, what was alluded to earlier, not a, a broken up, but a holistic approach to this.
I, I hear you. I agree with you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris-Doss.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kukorian, and thank you for your leadership on this particular aspect of our plan to build out the economy of, of Los Angeles. And thank you, Mr. Reamer and your team, for your enthusiasm around these issues. And, and I, I want to ask a set of questions or a category of questions to poke at that enthusiasm just a little bit.
Sure.
Because, you know, you and I have known each other a while and we're from the same part of the, the world and, and the city. And so while we get very excited about these types of programs, you know, on the other hand, we want to be very sober at the same time. And there are really two sets of questions, and these are discussions you and I've, I've had before, about the resistance that investment has to certain areas.
Yes.
Right? Some of that is associated to not necessary bureaucracy, not even necessarily access to capital or the cost of doing business. In fact, you and I both know there are parts of the city where we will pay people to do business there and you still can't get people to do it. So, so really there are two sets of categories of things that I hear from business leaders when we talk to them about investing in these types of areas. One is the infrastructure, right? So the roads, a simple thing like the availability of high-speed internet or not, which is not a decision the city makes, but it's, it's a reality. And just the sticky, sticky, sticky point of race. So certain areas, the buildings are there, the workers are there, the people are there, the incentives are there, and it just, the investment seems almost allergic to the areas. And, and I know this program doesn't address that, but I'm, I'm curious to hear how you're thinking about that, given I know you've spent as much time as anybody, you and, and Sam both and others, as much time as anybody thinking about these, these tough issues. Because, you know, we've, we've had programs before now and they produced uneven results.
Yes. If, if, if it's okay for me to dream publicly and, and I'll, I'll do that, I'm going to go back to what the chairman asked me. And I envision a day where through the Economic Workforce Development Department, we are partnering with council offices. Our experts in the BRU are working hand in hand with your economic development policy field deputies. And we are learning and hearing from you what is needed. And we're communicating that message to the business community. We're extending partnerships and letting people know that you are wanted. Everybody wants to minimize risk. It doesn't matter where in the city it happens to be. Even if it's in an environment where unemployment is extremely low, crime rates are low, a business owner is not going to go in there if the risk is high because it could be something else. So let's have that conversation and let's talk through the issue. I, I totally can hear you, agree with you, that there's certain areas of the city where that doesn't seem to have happened. I don't have a want where I can waive it and fix that. What I can say is I believe this is a tool that can work. And I believe that we're moving in the right direction with this tool and the economic development strategy citywide where if we, and I'll let that be the biggest word in the world right now, if we as a city commit to working together and if we as a city recognize and embrace the fact that it doesn't matter how strong other areas of the city are, the weakest area of the city reflects and represents us and we don't want that at all, then this is something that can't happen. It does need to. We, we do speak to some of the incentives that other departments already offer, but yes, this partnership should include public works. It should speak to that business that is going to either locate or relocate into a Jedi Zone. Are they going to have to worry about their trash getting picked up? Are they going to have to worry about their trees getting trimmed or their street being swept? These, these, these are things that the BRU in consultation with the council office, these are areas and items that we can have that conversation. And then it will ultimately get down to, does business believe us or not? And so we build momentum through having small successes. A good example, I'm going to ask Sam to tell the story, is a bakery, 27th Street Bakery. Tell it, Sam.
Sure. Recently, as recent as last month, correct me if I'm wrong, Daisy, 27th Bakery had some issues. They had some, some issues with their landlord and there's potential- They had some some issues with their landlord, and there's potential, the potentiality, if you will, for displacement, rent for to go up. And the Business Response Unit got a call. Thankfully, we had someone on board to respond to the query, and we in turn contacted the Business Source Center, triaged the business, if you will, had a sit-down with the business, affected council office, if you will, the BRU, planning and others, and talked through what was happening, proposed a potential solution to the dilemma or the challenge that the business was dealing with. And we're taking steps to help them resolve that very issue. We brought some things, the team brought some things to the attention of the business owner, they were clueless. They just didn't know whether there were services, the Business Source Centers, the BRU, the fact that they were there. But ultimately, it's it's the brass tacks, it's the cash oftentimes, just how do I get it done? And right now, the business owner is acutely aware of a strategy to potentially buy the very building that she had previously been leasing or renting from for a number of years. That's a good story. That's a win. That's a win, in my mind, in my book, not only from an educational standpoint of view for this particular business owner, but ultimately, if it works out, for the community that's serviced by this particular business. And if you don't mind, going back to to the question about what I sort of view as setting the stage, I think the Jedi zones, along with SEDs, along with, yes, opportunity zones, and potentially tax increment financing districts, certainly promise zones, Slate-Z promise zone, these are great to set the stage to attract and retain businesses, particularly the opportunity zones. Much has been said about that. The short of it is, it's a ten thirty-one on steroids. And for many people, we go back to that bottom line, they're chasing a bottom line. And if they can achieve that in areas that they previously would not have gone to, they very well might go and do that. And so that's primarily on the real estate side, and that's what's talked about, but there's also a business component, the opportunity zones. So when we have the opportunity zone, which came through with our existing administration through the two thousand seventeen Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, coupled with a local effort, such as the Jedi zone, which is proposed today, I think we're in a position to either ignite development or accelerate development and opportunities that are taking place in in areas that are already fairly affluent, and for those areas that are seemingly sort of disproportionately suffering from neglect. And just one other matter I think is worth mentioning, and I don't want to talk too much about the SEDs, but the upside of a citywide economic development strategy and a comprehensive economic development strategy for the purposes of an economic development administrative grant, there are funds that can sort of address some of the infrastructure that needs to be brought up to date in various areas. And it just so happens, I know of a particular development that's taking place wherein, to shall remain nameless, I understand that EDA is coming in to handle much of the offsites. And so I think we have to continue to be creative, we have to evolve, we can't do, we can't stick in an analog world. Things are moving quickly, and we need to think outside of the box. We also need to really evaluate, not just evaluate, really look at public-private partnerships, and knowing how to effectively use them so that the city can realize its goals of retraining, creating new jobs, net new jobs, keeping businesses, growing the sales tax, the city tax base, I should say, and ultimately improving the quality of life for residents of the city of Los Angeles, whether you're in the harbor or the West Valley, and every place in between.
And and council member, this will not be my pledge to you, a favorable vote, and then we're gone. Metrics are meaningful, and they help us all hold each other accountable to what we say we want. For those businesses who have risk concern, what are they? And let's work together to address them. And at the same time, what are you bringing to the to the environment? I I I agree with the council member. L.A., we should not be ashamed of who we are and what we have. We have a lot to offer, a lot to offer, and and being a voice to communicate that. I call the department a number of things. Today, I'm going to call us a willingness to be that translator, where we're hearing from you, and we're hearing from the businesses, and we're making sure that they understand what options exist, because many of the businesses don't. I I, the council member of Bloomingfield invited me to his Bobcat session, and I had one of the businesses say, "We didn't even know you existed." And I was like, embarrassingly, we have to change that. And so there are a number of businesses that don't know the resources that exist for that risk that they have to dissipate, not completely go away. But if we can lower it to a place where they're comfortable to come and try, then our thing is to say, "We'll be right here with you."
Well, thank you for that, and I I appreciate your sensitivity to that and your your understanding, the history and the the concern about about our ability to actually make this something that's real and impacts people's lives. Switching gears real hard into brass tacks, how long is it going to take me to set up one of these things? Really?
How long does it take us to get from here to full council and that? I mean, how long will it take to set?
I mean, once once we're.
That's a great question.
Once the, it's got to all the signatures and votes that it needs, we start.
All the signatures, all the votes are in, and then we get our first request. As the policy communicates, we don't move on our own, we wait until we get a request to identify, we'd like to have a Jedi, well, you know, Daisy's been sitting here so nicely.
Yes.
I want to let Daisy have an opportunity to speak. Daisy, because you're going to be the one doing this, how long is it going to take?
Okay, so we have a great team working on the Jedi program, and we anticipate, as Mr. Reamer said, as we get activated requests for us to do an assessment, we'll certainly do expedite the request as much as possible. Certainly, it'll be, it's it's something new. This is unprecedented. So I don't want to sit here and make promises, this this is how fast we're going to do it, because we want to, that first one is going to be our guinea pig, it's going to be our test, it's going to be our, going to help us build the roadmap so we can improve our process. Certainly, we'll expedite it as much as we can. I know this is something that's needed, a tool that we that we want to implement right away. I would say that if we get a request within, we can.
You can go ahead and say it.
Commit to a time.
Yeah. Just arrange it. I won't.
We'll consider it a soft commitment.
It's a soft commitment, and just a range of time, we certainly would respond to you right away and start the assessment, I would say, within thirty to ninety days. And then we can, again, as we smooth out our processes, we'll certainly try to do it, you know, faster and expedite it as much as we can.
I'm I'm sure we're scaring the city attorney as we get here.
Yeah.
But I I, the notion of thirty to ninety days, I would I would say the same thing. If if nothing more than to have a rough perimeter with respect to.
Right.
Where this will be, to finalize where it is, I mean, that's that's a good starting sign, especially for the first one. And then there are a number of things that will go into it with respect to where where is it asked to be located. If it, the easy thing is to put a smack dab on top of an opportunity zone. That's not a problem, done deal, we're we're ready to go. But if it's not connected to either an opportunity or promise zone, and we now have to look into, I believe we have the possibility of eight criteria, five of which one might have, one must have to 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 qualify.
Sure.
You know, which one of the five of the eight will 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 fit? One could argue that's preparatory work that that we could start, but we we want to hesitate in being presumptuous. But yes, we'll 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 say ninety days on outside.
That that's helpful. I mean, I think as you all know, there are investors who, you know, claim that they're ready to go on opportunity zone, they just want to see what the city's going to do on Jedi. So, you know, to the extent that that's true, that that claim is true, it's it'll be helpful to have some predictability. Some, just, you know, an idea of predictability, not so much to be able to call you back here in ninety days and.
No, I understand.
Bang my fist on the table.
No, no.
I would never do that, by the way. But that's the, we're just trying to paint a picture for investors in the community around what they should expect.
And and that that's why, again, my dreaming publicly, that healthy relationship with the BRU and the various council offices, because you will probably get the calls before we do, knowing that there are a list of investors that are ready to move, and these are their concerns, their their risk tolerance level, ours is to lower. And if, we're going to have areas where we we move on it rapidly, and we spend a lot of time getting it done, because we certainly don't want that to be the reason why an investor chooses another city. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this, members? All right. So it's been a long-awaited day. I'm going to recommend that we adopt Recommendations numbers one through four, amending them to require that all Jedi Zone requests be initiated by council motion. And I'd ask that we replace Recommendations five through eleven with the following: instruct the CAO to report back regarding EWDD's transmittal on the Jedi Zone establishment policy, including funding and potential fiscal impact.
Second.
And that will come back, that CAO then, the CAO report will then come back to this committee, so that we can start to address some of the funding issues that you raised as well, Mr. Bloomingfield. So any objection to proceeding accordingly? Without objection, that will be the action of the committee. Thank you all very much. And we're going to go right to number three as well, out of order.
Number three, Economic and Workforce Development Department, and CAO reports relative to the citywide economic development strategy.
And members, this matter was already heard by the Economic Development Committee, which approved the recommendations as amended, mindful of the fact that Mr. Harris-Dawson and I have another committee that starts in twenty-two minutes. We'll hear briefly on this one, and then we'll go ahead and go to the recommendations.
Thank you very much again for the opportunity. As we somewhat alluded to earlier, for us, the SEDs is the map. It's the city's map, the acronym, the mandate from from the city to address economic development, one that will provide access, not just for businesses to thrive, but for employees, job opportunities as well. And it provides a pathway that leads to economic growth, economic vitality, and prosperity for Angelenos. We are certainly pleased that this SEDs has inside of it a a mandate, if you will, to abuse that word, but I I plan on doing that, for the city family to come together and work together as one. As was alluded to earlier, right now, economic development is somewhat fractured, as perceived by others, and and SEDs attempts to address that. This tool will make us eligible, as Mr. Hughes alluded to earlier, for EDA grants. And and so it it's something that we certainly would want your eye vote on, for us to move forward and, again, address economic development in a way that reflects who we are and what we want as a city.
Questions, members? Bloomingfield?
Yeah, this is also, this is great, really exciting to get to get to this phase, and I'm just thrilled at everything that's in here. Couple of narrow questions, because I know our time is is coming up. One thing I don't see in there, which maybe maybe it is, and I just don't see it, or or maybe there's a way to go about it, deals with us paying our bills quickly. I've been recently meeting with a number of small businesses in my community, and, you know, this one business, and I think we're working with you guys to try to figure something out, where they, it's a successful business, but it's taking them six to nine months to get paid by the city. And they have a lot of small minority-owned subcontractors, and 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 it just, it just boggles my mind, because I'm thinking, we do all these things to try to promote our small business and minority businesses, and if we're not, the the, one of the the most direct things we could do is to pay them quickly. And and I think that that may not seem like a a business strategy, but I think it is. It's the lowest-hanging fruit that we have, and we could do anything. I mean, they were actually suggesting we participate in this program where this company forward funds it and takes a percentage out, which is really interesting, but also, you know, frustrating, because I don't want us to be, you know, basically paying a third party to pay our our bills, because we don't get them paid. So question is, what have improvements have been made to ensure that our invoices, especially from small businesses, are paid quickly, and how does that fit into the into the strategy? I know it's a little far field, but I thought it's.
Well, I I don't know that it's far field. I mean, the the SEDs has as part of it a small business commission that we will be working with, where we are receiving input from representatives that will be nominated by several of the council offices and the mayor's office to give us feedback as to some concerns. Getting feedback doesn't fix the problem, though. And we, I'm I'm fully aware with another hat that I wear, that payments is an issue right now. And we are committed to addressing that. I I, we cannot address economic development if there is no economic development, because there's no money, and employees can't get paid.
Although, that's, the money's eventually there. The big companies, they can float for six months. It's these, it's.
It's a small.
We're killing the small ones, yes.
It's a small, but not only in that scenario, but we we also are attempting to create opportunities. Community-level contracting is a term that I'll throw out, I believe that Councilman Kocorian may be familiar with it, where we want to do business with the small businesses. And the hesitancy is there. Back to the the word that the council member used, Harris-Dawson, with respect to risk. I'd love to do business with the city, but it's going to take me forever to get paid. We want to eliminate that issue. So we're we're committed to dealing with that. All the departments coming together, we're all talking and and addressing this issue and prioritizing the things that businesses want us to address. And as we do this and build, for lack of a better word of saying it, credibility and confidence, I I believe it'll go a long way into removing some of those concerns. It is an issue right now, most certainly. I won't duck it and run from it, and we're committed to fixing that problem.
Okay. I guess I would just, for whatever it's worth, I would push it up high on the list, because I think it's.
Understood.
A precursor to a lot of the other good things.
I I totally agree with you.
You know, someone testified earlier about the municipal corporation concept, and that was put forward in ITGS. In fact, I asked them at that point, this was the Controller's Report, so we'll have you talk to EWDD at that time, and they they had not. So has that conversation been having, and and where are we, how does that fit into our our real estate strategy, or does it?
Sure. If I understand correctly, you're referencing the, I think, Controller's Report?
Yes.
That suggested another nonprofit be established to facilitate real estate development. In many ways, one of the recommendations from the CLA's office that that EWD implemented in the in the revised SEDs is addressing the the economic development delivery strategy, and more specifically, as it relates to the recommendation in the Controller's Office. Respectfully, there is a nonprofit that exists, namely Los Angeles Development Fund, LADF, that's already in existence. The Articles of Incorporation, as I've read through them, allow for activities beyond just new market tax credit facilitation, which is what they do. And so one of the recommendations within the SEDs is to allow EWD to work better and more directly with LADF and their board to expand the the services that they provide, which would enable us not only to potentially tap into other resources, money that the city itself formally cannot tap into, but also, if necessary, leverage third-party real estate experts, if necessary, and expedite the the contracting services, if necessary. Beyond that, through the committee, EWDD has established its own asset management division, its real estate asset management unit, that has professionals that are more than capable to to handle economic development-based real estate deals. Housing is handling housing matters, certainly GSD and others, they play their role. With respect to the the recommendation put forth in that report, respectfully, I think that through the LADF and other efforts, we're well on our way, and we just need to to bless the SEDs and ultimately work with the working group and and get things done.
Yeah, makes sense. Yeah, I mean, at some point, not here, but I'd love to drill down on, it seems like there's some good ideas there with with the LADF is ready to roll in many good ways. And there's definitely something there, and a big part of our, you know, we do have this tremendous real estate asset to leverage, and just how do we do that in the best way? But I appreciate you addressing that and and going forward. Another question, the report references services provided during the December seventeen to eighteen timeframe. With turnover in positions, how do we ensure that we continue to update that? And I'm talking about everything, we've got, you know, lists of the liaisons and things like that. How do we make sure that what we did during that timeframe is going to be valid on an ongoing basis? valid on an ongoing basis?
Restate the question.
Sure. So the report references a lot of services that were provided during the December 17 to February 2018 timeframe, and it talks about all these different things, which are great, even just coming up with a list of department liaisons and giving that to people, and it checks off that that's been done, but how do we know, how do we make sure that it gets done, it doesn't get stale? The kinds of things that we've done during that timeframe, the report talks about that we did from 2017 to 2018, now it's 2019, almost 2020, and a lot of those service things that we've done aren't going to mean much if they're not updated regularly.
I think the report backs, I think the report backs are critical, not only to advising council, but also holding the departments accountable for the very things that they're doing. And I'm larking right now to the BRU unit, Business Response Unit within EWDD, and what it is doing specifically in liaising, if you will, with other departments to help facilitate businesses, sort of as they meander through the city process. I believe at ED Committee a few months ago, that report was prepared, there are several other reports that are calendar to be presented, and I think if we continue to do that and other departments do the same, we're able to stay engaged and inform you all on the progress, such that it does not get stale.
Great. Well, it's a bunch of things I might drill down on, but I'm respectful of the time that we've got going. I know you have another committee, so I'm going to, I like, I'm, my questions are, I can find out the answers to later, I'm happy with where we're moving, so.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson? All right. Well, then, as to item number three, members, I'd ask that we concur with the actions taken by the Economic Development Committee to approve the EWDD report as amended, that we receive and file the CAO report, and that we propose amending the council action of March 20, 2019, to delete Recommendation 2 from the committee report. And if there's no objection, that will be the action of the committee. Thank you very, very much. Great work. And that brings us to item number two.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 2, CLA report relative to a status update on the Citywide Conference of Job Creation Plan.
Good afternoon, Clay McCarter with the CLA. In 2016, council adopted the Jobs and Business Advancement in Los Angeles Plan, which was developed by this committee. The Jobs Plan presents a set of 12 strategies, includes short and long-term steps to achieve specified goals to better assist businesses and promote job creation in the city. The plan has 143 recommendations, and as of June, 81 have been completed. Some notable recommendations that have been completed include establishing the Business Response Unit, as alluded to earlier, the completion of the SEDs, the Conference of Economic Development Strategy, and a small business online portal. In February, the committee had asked the CLA to prepare a list of recommendations that allow the city to, quote, "get out of the way" and allow economic development to happen more flexibly, and so we provided a list in the chart. Some of the highlights of getting out of the way include digitizing all procurement certifications, the Build LA Portal, which is an online service center for BOE, planning, building, and safety and fire, which is complete and online now, and then one of our recommendations is to have the Department of Finance report on the feasibility of allowing users to access their business tax registration certificates online. So, and with that, I'll take your questions.
Terrific progress, really. To have implemented so many of those recommendations already, I think is really a great sign. The one recommendation I'm going to make to the CLA's recommendations is, when, in the CLA report, there's in addition to direct the Economic and Workforce Development Department to market economic development services to the business improvement districts. I'd like to add to that, and chambers of commerce. For the simple reason that I was, and I think Mr. Reamer actually alluded to this a little bit too, I was quite surprised when we had a meeting of this committee, and we talked about the local preference ordinance in procurement, and we had a room full of community chambers of commerce who had never heard of this, and it had been in place for years at that point. So I think as we develop these recommendations further, marketing them to those who can distribute it within their own business networks as well, and make, ensure that the word gets out, is going to be helpful, the bids are one way, chambers are another. But that's the only recommendation I would make on this item. Members, any questions about this? Okay. Then I would ask that we adopt the CLA report with the one amendment I mentioned, and note and file the BCA report.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
We got you done.
Terrific. So is there any other item, are there any other items before the committee?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. Then this committee is adjourned. Thank you all very much.